Notice was hereby given of this regular meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons for the city of Bastrop this Thursday, May 13th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. in the courtroom at City Hall. We're going to have a, or this is our call to order, and I'm going to ask Councilman Shaw to lead us with the invocation, and I'm going to ask Council Lady Moore to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Shall we stand?
Please, by mouthful, time of waiting. Thank you for what you do to us, Lord. Lord, we just come to you tonight thanking you for your many blessings and thanking you taking care of us, Lord, with all the stuff that's going on around the world. And we just pray and thank you for watching out for us, and thank you for helping with our, with our city as we continue to try to improve. Thank you for that. And, Lord, we just, again, thank you for all that you do for us and how you love us, Lord. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute. Where? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
Mayor, all present but Mr. Crater and Mr. Green is absent, but we do have a call.
This meeting is now in session. Do we have any announcements? Do we have any public comments as they relate to items on the agenda? Item four, I mean item five, I'm sorry, approval of the previous minutes of the regular meeting Second, been approved by, I mean, I'm sorry, been motion, moved by Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Shaw that we approve these minutes. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Item six, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 21-1948, bills and claims for the month of Committee Chair, Finance Committee Chair Shaw?
Mayor, would you?
This is resolution, the resolution. No, yes, sir.
It's back before bills and claims for all the work been done this week, and I'm just giving this one. And please, I got the motion for the month of April 2021.
Okay. Motion. Mr. Shaw, you made the motion?
Yes.
And second then by, yeah, second by, it's been moved by Councilman Shaw, second by Council Lady Moore, that the resolution is adopted. What'd you, favor? All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the item six, the resolution is adopted. Ms. Carpenter, Morehouse Madness 2022. Welcome, Ms. Carpenter, how are you?
Thank you.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Shirley, my name is Vicky Carpenter, and my address is 3120 Clint Lane, Bastrop, Louisiana. I just wanted to thank y'all for letting me be on your agenda this morning. Additionally, I want to thank you for making it possible for us to have Morehouse May Madness. With the blessings of the Lord, we had a beautiful day and a crowd that was ready to get out and have fun, and we believe it was a success. And we attribute that to everybody pitching in. It was a team effort, and without everybody playing, it never would have happened. And we'd like to do it again in 2022, so I'm here to ask your approval to do it again.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Locke, second by Council Lady Moore, that we give the kind of support for next, is that, was that your motion, Mr. Locke?
Yes, sir.
That we just give your approval now for next year, support?
This is to make it official, my request for approval, whom do I give it to?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, that approval is, thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Thank you.
Ms. Haynes, Ms. Cindy Haynes, Hillen and Xenia, Audit Report, fiscal year ending June 20, I mean, June 30th of 2020.
Okay, we're going to do our slideshow like, like we normally do, and we always start out with the general fund revenues. This is the revenues, as it says, just of the general fund, it's not the sales tax fund, it doesn't have anything to do with the sewer or anything else, it's strictly the general fund that runs the day in and day out operations of the city. Our revenues were almost 11 million. The city of Bastrop has been running on about a $10 million budget for years. You know, there's, hasn't been any additional revenue sources, so we've been able to maintain that. You will see from this chart that the majority of the revenue, 8 million, comes from taxes. And then the other, the next in line would be the intergovernmental, so that would be like state and federal funding that we might get. Okay, on the next one, we're going to look at the, no, there we go, okay, we're going to look at taxes. Of those taxes that we said was 8 million dollars, this is an additional breakdown of those, and we'll see the majority of that is sales taxes. Then second is the property taxes, and then last is the grocery six tax, such as your cable franchises, your beer tax, small things like that. Okay, then we're going to move to the expenditures, and you'll see that they're right in line with the revenues, the 10.9 million. Majority of our expenditures are for fire, 28%, followed by the general, 26%, which that's basically Ms. Goldman's office, just the administrative, for takings of the city, and then followed by that is 19% is the police. Okay, and then, I feel like I'm missing something, they might be in there somewhere. Okay, we'll see that our actual was 10 million, and we budgeted 9.5 million. So there's no, I guess the general fund basically underspent from what they had budgeted, so that's good. Everybody else was pretty much in line with, with their budgets. Okay, and then this is just a comparison of the prior three years, 2018, 19, and 20, and again, you can see everything's pretty well consistent between the periods, no big material variances between the years. So, like I said, that's the gist of it. It's almost time to start the new audit, so after you all have had a chance to look at your audit, if you have any questions or whatever, feel free to contact Ms. Goldman, and she'll get with me, and we'll get you an answer.
Thank you so much, Ms.
Thank you.
Cindy, thank you so much. Item nine, resolution.
How are sales taxes at this point? Do we have any?
We, it is coming, it's really slow now, the late ones is the same ones, but it's going to, it's supposed to be in the paper this week, the delinquents, so hopefully, you know, more people will come on in and pay them.
I think you, were you talking about sales taxes, like you spend money at the store? He was talking about sales taxes.
Our sales tax is really good. People are shopping here, and our revenue is staying here, so we're blessed.
And that's, that's a result of COVID-19, people, they shut down the mall in Monroe, and people started appreciating what we have here now, so, yes.
And they, they shop online a lot, a lot, but our sales tax, as well as the whole state of Louisiana, they have a portal, and they're real good at contacting those businesses that sell online, and they're, we're able to collect those from those vendors too.
Okay. Item nine, since the full council is not here, I would like a motion to table item nine.
It's been moved, second.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Shaw, that we table this? All in favor?
Aye.
This, this item is tabled until our next meeting. Item 10, Resolution 21-1949, a resolution authorizing the city of Bastrop, Louisiana to adopt the ad valorem village.
Mayor, Mr. Bowles' office, I talked to him today, and he asked us to hold this for next month.
Oh, table, yes, right. So we're asking you to table this one also, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, it's been moved by Council Lady Moore, second by Councilman Locke, that we table this. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item 11, Discussion Action Bid for Breathing Apparatus for the Fire Department, Chief Crowder and Chief Williams, Department of Defense Chief Williams and Bastrop Fire Department Chief Crowder. Greetings, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Mayor, Tim has really been leading the way on this with that grant and everything, so I'm going to let him basically do all of it.
Okay, all right.
So during 2019 and 20, we applied for the local government assistance program, we applied for $50,000 with a $10,000 match for new SCBA's, and we were awarded that money, so we took bids, closed bids for 30 days, and the bid that come in that won the bid We basically have 24 air packs, this will supply us with nine new air packs, 12 new masks, and 12 voice amplifiers, which we don't presently have. So out of the 24 that need replaced, it'll get nine of them.
Okay.
You did what you want. Yes, sir, we run the same brand that we do, so they're interchangeable with what we already have.
Tim, I want to thank, thank you for getting the information up to the rest of the year.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And the ones we have right now are the 2002 edition, new ones are the 2018 NFA edition, so our life cycles are, on the ones we have are, they're well outdated.
That's Discussion Action Bid for Breathing Apparatus.
I'll make a motion, I want to get a bid.
Okay. So it's been moved by Councilman Shaw, second by Councilman Locke. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
The ayes have it, thank you. Item 12, Discussion Action Bid for Bastrop Trails Connector for Smith-Wilson Park. Ms. Lenore, you, can you do this one, please?
To the council, we sent out, it was four bids that were submitted or sent out. Vesta, we had no response. Twin Cities Stripping came in at 396,000. Amnesty Construction in West Monroe came in at 187,000. Drea Contracting LLC, Bastrop, came in at 184,995. And that's the one we will be looking at, or at your all's pleasure.
Yes, we got, we had, we applied for a grant back in 2017, I guess it was, 2018?
Right.
And we got a grant for, the first amount was how much, Ms. Lenore?
90,000.
90,000, then we went back.
Yeah, and they, well, I talked to Michael Domain, who's been working close with us, and I asked him to kind of go back and see if we could get a little more added, and they did 25%, which come to, so we'll get an additional 22,500.
So we're getting about $112,000 toward this. This is the walking trails and the enhancements for Smith-Wilson Park.
We had already budgeted, because I know you're adding, we had already budgeted the 30,000 when we did the grant back in 2017, so it would be an additional 42,495 to complete the project for Smith-Wilson Park. Not the total, that's what I was saying, it'll be additional 42,495. That's why I went back to try to see if we, because it was right at 60-something in our, to look at it, and we got an extra 25.
What happened, the cost of concrete materials went up?
Went up, right.
What is your pleasure?
I'm going to make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Council Lady Moore, second by Councilman Shaw, that we proceed. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lenore. Item 13, Discussion Action, Park Recreation Commission, Ms. Carolyn Harris, District A, Ms. Clint Pittman, District B, Wanda Davis, District C, Mark Moore, District D, and, and Eric Hamlin, District E, Linda Ford, and, and Taylor Wilson. I just want you to accept these as members of the park commission. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept these.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved, Mr. Floyd. It's been moved by Ms. Moore, and second by Mr. Shaw, Robert. Okay, all in favor? Thank you so much. Discussion Action Complete Streets Committee. You have before you a small document, Complete Streets Policy. As you're aware, the state of Louisiana wanted all of NAF Avenue from 165 West all the way to 165 East that wraps around the southern border of, of the city of Bastrop. The city of Bastrop owned a section from the Collison Road, past the industrial park, and owned up close to Marlette Street. And we swapped that for two parish roads, which is Elm Street, it's 830-5, from the Collison Road to West Madison up here by, by Smith-Wilson Park. Okay? And we also are receiving from the state in that exchange, from the traffic light at Washington Square Shopping Center, you know, Bastrop Superfoods, from that traffic light past Cox, down to the first street to the right, which is Larch Lane, that highway, it's Highway 830-1, turns right on Larch Lane for one block, and then left on Van, goes through the traffic light right at Central Fire Station, all the way out to Pleasant Drive to Kamel Street. So we are getting those two streets in exchange for the state getting NAF Avenue, which is the southern bypass. The state agreed to pave those streets before they give them to us. They claim it's a 40-year surface. So in addition to that, we, when, when Ms. Lenore and myself went to Baton Rouge for a, a training, so that we could apply for grants, you have to go through, go through the training before you can apply. And while we were there, Ms. Stringfellow, who is the federal liaison for the Federal Department of Highways, Federal Highway Administration, I should say, and she works with the state because the, the federal government does not maintain US 165 and I-20 and all that, they have the state do that, but they have a liaison, and that's Ms. Stringfellow. Ms. Stringfellow, we got in a discussion about complete streets and what was going to happen with, with us getting streets. The state of Louisiana qualified, made into law, a streets, a complete streets policy, not to just worry about automobiles on the road, but to worry about cyclists and walkers and all of that. Elm Street is a very narrow street, and it's a dangerous street, so, so Ms. Stringfellow suggested that, that, and she thought that we were working, Ms. Lenore, myself and our administration was working hard in every, at everything that we did, and they had three parishes that they were going to let do a, a study, a transportation study. And we were asked if we wanted, they would take one of the parishes out and have two parishes and the city of Bastrop as the three pilot parishes. They're hiring a consultant, and they're going to come in and study every mode of transportation and make, and make suggestions, and start with a plan, and then they're going to go to another community, and another community, and another community, and as they build, they're going to learn more as they go, but they ask, and naturally I see it, yet we want to be first. Because, and I stated that, we want to be first for several reasons. One is, we're getting NAF, I'm sorry, we gave up NAF, but we get in Elm Street, and we get in Van Avenue. So I'm asking that the state of Louisiana honor their complete streets policy and give us some sidewalks and, and, you know, bike accommodations, and that meets our goal, our master plan for parks is to connect all of our parks anyway, and this would connect East Madison Park, which is now Smith-Wilson Memorial Park, to Raft Yards Park, and would go all the way down to the Collison Road. So I'm asking for you, and, and you can see in this, I didn't print the whole 50 pages of this complete streets policy, but I did want you to see the second page, that we picked what are complete streets, and the purpose of Complete Streets Manual is the next page, and the next page that, I think it's page 43 probably, Complete Streets for Louisiana Getting Started. And if you look at the second paragraph, they say a coalition of supporters should be, should be a board, and as diverse as possible, and may include planners, academics, and all of that. They recommend that you get a board together who's going to advocate for the streets and really work hard and make suggestions that's in the interest of everyone. So we have the study, we are going to be the first with Jason Douatt, who's coordinating with us, and the consultant will be here soon, okay? And we need this board to work with the consultant, and this board would, would talk to the council, and council members, of course, can also, you know, be part of, I would expect that you're part of and you participate with the board, because this is our real opportunity. I'm hoping that this, this study shows the need, and then we can get the funding to justify. So I'm asking you, just like we asked for, for you to name someone with the Parks Commission, I'm asking you to name someone with the interest, particularly interest, the interest immediate for Van Avenue. And I had asked Mr. Randy Williams, who has the center there on Van Avenue, the Restoration Center. What did I say?
Elm Street.
Yeah, Elm's that way. Elm Street, he has the Old Carver School on Elm. And I'm asking Pastor George Cooper to serve on, as my appointments, because they, they have an interest on Van. So we've got those two, and I'm asking each of you to, now Pastor Cooper has not committed yet, but that's who I'm looking at, and if, so I'm asking you for, first of all, to, to have this committee, to establish this committee, and secondly, to offer a person that you think will be energetic and take full advantage of the opportunity that the city of Bastrop has to really make these two streets starting something special, but then beyond that, they're going to study every other street, every other street, every other, every mode of transportation, and they're going to make, you know, this is at the federal level and the state level, and there's a lot of money available for complete streets. Okay. Okay, go establish a committee.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and second, moved by Councilman Locke, second by Councilman Shaw, that we establish this committee. Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, now the second part, Mr. Locke?
I'd like to make a motion, can you give us time, Mr. Shaw?
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay, if you can just call Ms. Lenore or Ms. Goldman and let, let us know, yeah, I wasn't looking for names right now, but if you can poll people in your communities and, and let them know what.
You, you contact DeeDee, DeeDee.
Yeah, DeeDee and I discussed it, discussed this at length, but we will contact him, Mr. Shaw, I mean, Mr. Locke. Van Avenue, Elm, Shaw, Locke, I'm sorry about that. Okay. Yes, right. Okay. So, so that's a go on everything? Okay.
I'll let you carry yourself.
Yeah, that you, that you will adopt, I mean, that you will appoint someone. Okay, you make that?
I made that.
Mr. Locke made the motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Shaw, that we, that every councilman is requested to name a member. And this, look, they recommend that this committee be big, so if you all wanted to recommend, you know, we need to establish a size, a size, go ahead, Robert.
Would we include our Chris Patrick, you know, like for Denman?
Yes, sir.
He's a professional, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, they, they will automatically work with the committee, anything that the committee, you know, our attorneys, Mr. Pierre, I hope that he's here, Mr. Pierre, and, and, and Chris, you know, Denman Engineering, for sure. They, Denman was here today, we met on several things, and we're closing out a, I should have made this in the announcements, we did the Brundle Street project. That was a roughly a million dollar project, wasn't it? The pipe that's coming out of the bridge at Montgomery and Brundle, the EPA gave, I'm sorry, the DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality, gave us a mandate the first week we were in office, that we do something about that, and we had to do about a million dollars worth of sewer, we got almost $800,000 in grants to do that, and we put the people's, some of the people's sewer use fees to good, and we repaired the lines, replaced lines all the way from that Brundle area all the way north to the North Pond, which is up in the, I mean, we went through fields and crossed 165 about two miles out of, a mile and a half, two miles out of town, and we did, they did manholes, and there was water getting in it. I mean, it was so bad that water would get in the sewer line and back up into people's houses into that, that Brundle area. So what someone did was they, they tapped into the manhole at Brundle Street, because the sewer is 10 feet below the ground. So they tapped in about five foot up and ran a 10-inch pipe out into Horse Bar, so that when the water would infiltrate and rise, rather than flooding people's houses, just dumped raw sewage into Horse Bar. And we, they, DEQ did not like that at all, so they called us on the carpet, that was my first meeting, was they called us and said, get down here this week, and we're going to fine you approximately $10,000 every time it discharged unless you do something about it. So that's when we want to work to do a project, and we're doing another, you, you all will be faced with another sewer project, hopefully, right, Ms. Goldman? That we met with today?
Yes, sir.
That's to, that's for the Unity Street area, you know, sewer bags up over there really bad, and there's two areas will be in that, and the, we'll have to go through the same process where we'll have to, if we score enough points, survey everyone in, that's served by those lines, and, and get income level, we won't have any trouble meeting the income, low to moderate income requirement there, so, so look for that, that's going to be another phase that Waxman III, Robbie Waxman, and Denman is working on right now as we, as we speak. So that's going to come before you also.
Mayor, I had a discussion on DOTD.
Yes.
And we, we, the way they put it is, we're, we hope to have a Martin Luther King Bridge open in the very near future.
Yes, we hope, sometime in July.
I said that before, but I.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, we had a lot of rain delays, I mean, it rained every.
But I'm, I'm optimistic, I think I'll move on.
Yes, we, we, we're. Yes, we, we, we're hoping that the state will be understanding and not penalize Ben Allen Construction because they were the lowest bidder by far. And, and we're just hoping that the, you know, I've sent my messages that, to, to the governor's office and DOTD that it's my desire that, that no litigation is had because they had a timeframe to get it done. And Mr. Pierre is so helpful on many fronts and that's something that I'm talking with him about, to make sure that we have input. We hadn't finished those discussions yet, though. Which item are we on, gentlemen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Okay. Is Mr. Bader here? I'd ask Mr. Bader, you know, you, we impanel an airport commission. And we have people who are really in aviation on the committee, who understands aviation and how airports should work. We desperately need hangars, we desperately need fourteen hundred ninety-eight feet added to the runway. And it was my hope that, and you know that when President Trump authorized an extra billion dollars, it was supplement to, to airports back in twenty eighteen. I did call the FAA in Washington and said, look, we're not on the list. Does that mean we can't apply? And they say, no, Henry, you can apply. I said, good. So, I applied for the runway extension fourteen hundred and ninety-eight feet, knowing that we would not get it. But we wanted to be competitive and let them know that we, that we need that. Jeff Bezos does not have a plane in his fleet that can land at our airport. So, a four thousand and four foot runway, if we add the fourteen hundred ninety-eight feet, it'll put us at five thousand five hundred, which is over a mile, then we can accommodate larger turboprops and jets. Okay, so, I'm asking you, I want your blessing. I'd like to appoint Mr. Mike Bader to the Airport Commission. We had a young lady, Sharice Goldsby's daughter, who was a student at Louisiana Tech in aviation, but she's left the area. So, this will be a replacement for, for a member that we, that we had. And I'd like to appoint Mr. Bader. Mr. Bader does construction, he's also a pilot. I heard through the great vanity, had just bought a couple of days ago a Comanche four hundred. So, he's an enthusiast and he was the gentleman who did the, the clearing for us, that, yeah, the obstruction removal. We did, got a half million dollar grant from, from aviation, from the FAA and removed all the obstructions, the trees that were at the end of runways and so that we can have a, a twenty, achieve a twenty to one and a thirty to forty-one glide slope into our airport, making it a lot safer to take off and land. So, Mr. Bader was a, was the contractor, he was a winning bid and I did not wanna make this appointment while he was working for the city contractually. So, I'm asking your blessing on that.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Been moved by, been moved by Council Lady Moore, seconded by Councilman Locke, that Mr. Bader, that Mr. Bader's appointment is accepted. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you so much for that. Item sixteen, discussion action, extend sewer main on Terrace Drive. I believe that's in your district, Mr. Locke. We had, we have a situation where in some areas of town, if you lived at the end of a road, the city of Bastrop would stop the sewer and you ran a pipe, little pipe down to four inch, down to it, under people's driveways and all that stuff. It's not, it's not a lot, but in certain areas of town, people were not fair with infrastructure back then. And, and that, we need to correct that. It's gonna cost probably about twenty-some thousand dollars more than likely, but we need to correct some of these things when we can. Mr. Locke, that's in your district, what's your feeling?
I'm moving that we extend that sewer main there because it's really not fair to aheal, but that's still stuck from somebody else's house. And obviously, money, you're representing that yard.
Yeah, underneath that driveway.
Underneath the driveway.
Okay, what's your, do we have a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, Mr. Locke moved, seconded by Councilman Shaw, Councilman Locke, I'm sorry, seconded by Councilman Shaw, at, that we extend this sewer main on, on Terrace Drive. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item seventeen, the appointment of John Anthony Evans as provisional chief of police of the city of Bastrop. We know that we've extended as acting chief twice, we can only do this two times. I polled members of the police department, I believe some of them are here now, I saw more, but I polled members of the police department to get their opinion on this. I think that John Anthony Evans is the policeman's policeman, but he's also the community's policeman. He's very knowledgeable, very fair. And morale, I believe that, that it's the right thing to do. And the reason it's provisional is because when Mr. Anthony, I mean, when, when, everybody calls him Anthony, but when Anthony Evans took the test before, he did not get the chief's job, another individual got it. And you have to have the test taken within a certain timeframe. So, this provisional means that he is the chief of police, provided that he, when he, when the chief's test is given, when, Ms. Goldman? Soon, it's real soon.
What's the date of the test?
The twentieth or the twenty-second?
Yeah, of May, right?
Yes.
So, so we would have to extend him again for ninety days, and that's not fair to him, for stability with all the stuff that's going on in our communities. I believe that this action will add to stability. And I think the police department's functioning well under his sixty days as chief. Every time he had to fill in, he did it with dignity. When the chief took vacation or whatever, or was off for any reason, in lengthy reasons, I mean, he's been wonderful. So, I would like for you to, to, to do this.
I make a motion that we...
Provisional.
Provision.
Yes, sir.
And that Doc, my doctor, Anthony Evans beat provisional chief of police.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Council Lady Moore, that, that we appoint John Anthony Evans, that you approve this appointment, as provisional chief of the city of Bastrop. Any discussion, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a unanimous, and congratulations, Chief Evans. And we really appreciate your service to the city of Bastrop, sir. Bastrop fortunate to have, have you. Now, item eighteen, is there any discussion on that or we're gonna get a motion for, join me? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We have, we have a need to go into executive session and it shouldn't take but a few minutes. Thank you, council. Please, yes. Thank you.
We need a motion.
Yep, okay, so it's been moved, been moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are gonna retire to executive session. Thank you, council.
We do need to sign, I gotta pass this back around and we'll get off.
Yeah, we need to come back in.
We can get it, come back in.
Yes.
This is one that I favor. We just come by an individual sound.
What do you just hit one?
Is that all?
We don't do nothing with this one.
Okay.
All right, I'm fine, what about you, man? You saying here? Okay, okay.